So welcome to CDA's public hearing for our 2026 program year. For CDPG priorities, so today. Well, this is Tom Nagel, our Public Information Officer here at CDA. And today, I'm my best. Part of our audio visual and presenting of our Chief Compliance Officer.
The Director of Compliance, Rashonda Alexander. Welcome to our 2026 Program Year Funding Priority Announcement for the Community Development Block Grant, which is a HUD-funded entitlement program. Today is July 18th, and it's our first public hearing. So let's tell you just a little bit about CDA. We'll do the next slide. CDA serves as the clearinghouse of a variety of federal funds. Specifically, what we're talking about today is a HUD-funded program. We administer state and local funds as well. We were founded in 1974 by, to administer housing and community development funds by a consolidation of the Planning Commission and then the Office of Business Development, Beautification and Model Cities Corporation. Can you guys hear me okay out here? Okay, great, thanks. All right. And basically, we have three tenants to empower, develop, and transform the city of St. Louis through Economic Justice Action Plan. Next slide. We have three operational divisions. Our fiscal compliance and construction team. Our fiscal team is a group of accountants and fiscal directors who report and submit pay requests to our Controller's Office and financial reports to the Treasury and to HUD. We have our compliance division of grant administrators who draft outputs, criteria, and reporting forms for CDA and our partners. And we have our construction and housing team of analysts and engineers who manage our housing production and home repair programs, as well as public improvement and other miscellaneous construction activities. Next slide, please. One of our team members made this beautiful flow chart. In essence, when people ask now more than ever, what is CDA? Initially, I'd just say we fund your funders for the most part. So you will see in this funding chart, CDA is in the middle, and we fund partners like SLDC or Covenant House, the Regional Arts Commission, and others listed on this slide. But it's by way of federal funding, which is on top of this flow chart. HUD is a focus today because we are administering through this public hearing for the fiscal year of '26. CDPG Community Development Block Grant Funds. Next slide, please. Last year, we did a lot in the city of St. Louis, not only with CDPG funds, but also with state and local fiscal recovery funds. And this is a list of some of the work that we did compiled over the year. I won't belabor you with going through all of these, but you can find it on CDA's website, which Tom will tell you about at the end of this PowerPoint. And also, if you're here and then want to take a moment to grab the QR code to get the CDA 2020 through 24 impact report, you can find this and more information in the detailed report. Next slide. Today, we're going to go over the CDPG entitlement program. We're going to talk about citizen participation, which this is a part of that process with public hearing. We're going to tell you about the priorities for the fiscal year '26, and then if you have any comments or questions. Next slide. We posted the timeline at the beginning of July on the 3rd. Today is the 18th. You can find this timeline on CDA's website. And essentially, the most important aspect of this is probably the RFP. And the RFP will be published on August 1st. You can find that on the website as well. And a link will be in the CDA newsletter. If you haven't signed up for it, please do, because that's a way to get all information, CDA, related to funding and other announcements. The purpose of this hearing is to give you and our friends online the opportunity to be included in the action plan process. Prior to us funding, we will be administering Community Development Block Grant Funds for this cycle. And the action plan will be posted on the website. Listed here, stlouis-mo.gov/cda. Next slide, please. There are three purposes of CDPG funds. To benefit the low, moderate, and income population, the elimination of slumming blight, and/or to meet urgent need. These are the three things that any nonprofit organization or developer must adhere to to receive HUD funding. Eligible activities include public services, economic development, public improvements, and facilities, and other activities, which we'll talk a little bit more in the coming slides. Also, home funds may be used to provide housing to benefit persons of low and moderate income. Next slide. This is our process for public participation. So we, of course, posted the timeline on July 3rd. We're now holding the first of two public hearings, which is listed for, today is July 18th. We are here at 1520 Market in Suite 2000. We advertised in the St. Louis American on July 3rd to let the public know about this process, holding the public hearing. And then we'll have a webinar to talk about best practices, even though a lot of our sub-receipients are repeat nonprofits. We have some exciting development and new interest in CDPG funds and new sub-receipients, especially through the American Rescue Plan Act and SLR funds. So if you don't know about Community Development Block Grant or what it means, we have a webinar that will help you learn a little bit more about it through our best practices, and that will be on August 15th of this year. These funds, very appropriate to note that we had an extensive consolidated planning process. And it was completed last year. Everything that we're talking about today regarding priorities and those that are high priorities were developed through this planning process, and it was full of open houses. We had a Citizen Advisory Committee, and also community-wide focus groups and active departmental plans that helped make the plan manifest. And now we're rolling out the action plan by way of this 2025 through 2029 consolidated process. This is the first action plan from that consolidated planning process. Next slide. These are pictures from all of the activities with during the consolidated planning process. We had tabling at our rec centers throughout the city, and our team met, received public comments, and used all that information to inform the next four years. Our high priorities this year are affordable housing and economic development, along with youth and tornado recovery. These first two slides for affordable housing. Our primary goal is to approve, improve affordability and decent housing in the city. Economic development, we want our small businesses to thrive. We want to create jobs specifically for low to moderate income people and provide assistance and incentives for small micro enterprise businesses throughout the city. Encouraging, of course, historic preservation, because we have those beautiful red bricks that we heard people have been trying to get a hold of since the devastating tornado and rehabilitating our business properties. Next slide. Another high priority is our youth. The future is our youth, and we want to invest in those low to moderate income families and early education, after-school programs, and recreational activities that we know by research help to improve high school graduation rates and increase employment and reduce crime, and ultimately, better health outcomes. Next slide. The tornado, we initially did not have, right? During the consolidated planning process. But it became apparent that we needed to do a substantial amendment to incorporate this and make it a high priority for our '26 action plan. And that's why it's listed here. Our primary goal is to stabilize as much of the city as possible in tornado recovery efforts and to help rebuild those impacted communities, particularly surrounding temporary shelter and home repairs, but also mental services and legal services and coordinated case management for those citizens impacted by the tornado, businesses as well. Next slide, please. Other priorities include planning, homelessness, homelessness outreach. Next slide. Emergency shelter, public facilities and improvements, public facilities, and then administration capacity building to do the work in the community. Next slide. Our Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas have been proposed to HUD. This eliminates a public service cap that we have from HUD. Nineteen percent of all HUD funding is allocated for public services. We get a lot of applications from sub-receipients who want to do public services. And we are limited by this cap of how much money we can use in that area. But with a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, the public services cap is basically popped off. And so what we're doing now is asking HUD, can you designate some more areas throughout the city so that we don't have this cap? We don't have this limit of how much money we can use? That's what this is. We have one choice. Well, it is that gray area, the one that looks gray. That's already been HUD-approved. The others have been submitted, and an application will be, will be submitted in an application to HUD pending approval. Then we will have new Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas. They've all been redone since our initial application and include Martin Luther King Boulevard Corridor, North NERSA, which is short for Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, Penrose, O'Fallon, College Hill NERSA, and then the Southeast NERSA. Next slide. These are key dates. So today, we're here for our public hearing. The RFP will be issued on August 1st. We will have the overview on the same day, on the 1st, a best practices workshop on the 15th. And the deadline, the deadline, the deadline to submit is September 5th at 4:00 PM. It will be via our New Grants Management System, Salesforce, of which you can find information on the CDA website. Next slide, please. We encourage public participation. We have people here, and we also have people virtually. Feel free to submit any questions or comments to CDA. And you can do it via email at cda@stlouis-mo.gov. We want to meet the high priority needs. And our next slide is Q and A. So Tom will take over from here. We'll address our people in-house and then online. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Rashonda. For people on Zoom and also in the room, I'll just share our screen. So citywebsite.gov/cda. Scroll down. Neighborhood Transformation Grants for Housing Production. This funding cycle was closed on Friday, and I will be replacing this right on the homepage so people are ready for the next CDPG funding cycle. As has been mentioned before, if you scroll on down, right here, you can sign up for our newsletter. You can also, for your coworkers or friends, copy and paste their email right in there and sign up your coworkers. So we started a MailChimp newsletter about two years ago. We're at about 2,300 subscribers, which is up from, I think, 1,000 when we started just with our BCC emails a couple of years ago. So we're really excited about that, and it's the best way to stay in tune with everything happening here at CDA. And we also tell some fun stories about our partners. So for questions and answers, Trenton at STLTV, could you go ahead and open up the chat for everyone? So if you are on Zoom, you can go ahead and raise your hand. I'll bring you on. We're having some audio issues. So you'll just read it out, and I will repeat for the room your question, kind of do it radio show style. And then put your questions in the chat or in the Q and A here on Zoom. Well, we'll just start with the room. Is there anyone in the room that has any questions about what we presented today over here? Yes. Yeah, so for everyone on Zoom, the question was on August 15th. Where is that best practices webinar? It is on the web. It'll be on Zoom only. We've just found it's a lot easier than packing people into this room and running a hybrid meeting. It's just easier and I think more equitable to have everyone in the same place on Zoom. And that information will be on CDA's website, announced in our newsletter. And so that's coming up. Let's go onto Zoom really quick. Someone is asking, is a nonprofit able to submit grant applications for more than one project? Great, and Marlene is asking, would offering free legal services to small businesses and nonprofits fit within CDA's funding priorities?
Oh, I'm going to type in for you as well that answers are yes to both.
And I forgot to unmute.
Rashonda, could you just repeat that again? I had you muted. You're answering. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so offering free legal services to small businesses and nonprofits would fit into, it is CDPG eligible. It is a CDPG eligible activity. And the other question was, it was also a yes.
Can you submit for more than one project?
Yes, you can submit for more than one project. And so that, Mariana, welcome back, had a question on this side. It depends on what the applicant applies for. So we have to wait to see what's on the application.
Rashonda, could you just repeat that question one more time?
Yes, so we had a question asking about tornado recovery funds, and if it would fall under urgent need or slumming blight or you have, or public services. And so the answer to the question is it depends on what is included in the application, how it can be categorized. But definitely, please apply, because the three tenants for HUD and CDPG are urgent need, responding to low, moderate income population, and then eliminating slumming blight. So those are the three categories at the beginning of the slide of which you can apply. Public services actually falls under the LMI population. Go ahead. Oh.
Yes, after this meeting, I will upload it to that main website for this year's funding cycle. So yes, it will be available.
So we haven't had a prioritization for tornado recovery funds. It did become a priority as far as being high, but in terms of an allocation specific for tornado recovery has not been identified. We encourage anyone to submit regarding tornado recovery because it is a high priority, so that's good. Along with youth, and along with affordable housing, and along with economic development. Thank you for the assist, Colleen. And Alice, I see on mine that someone is asking. The notebook will be released, and I'm typing to let you know that the RFP will be released on August 1st.
So if you're online, you can raise your hand, and I'll unmute you, and you can ask us questions or just type into the Q and A. In the Q and A, there's a new question, and they are asking, does CDA know how much money will be available in the 2026 program year?
Those numbers have yet to be stated for me to share publicly, but you can find it in the RFP when it is released on August 1st. Great question, though I would have asked the same thing in advance of the RFP.
Any more questions in the room? Comments, observations? Poems, songs? Chance? Yes? Thank you. Well, we'll just count to 30 and see if there are any more questions in the room or on Zoom. I'll just share again, so I'm sharing the screen. I have to click Share on Zoom now and in the room. You can see this will be the main page for this funding cycle. If you've gone through one of these funding cycles before, so we'll list different notices. And you'll find the links to the meetings where you'll get the Zoom links. We have the timeline posted. Once there's videos of today, we'll post a link to that video on the city's YouTube channel here. We'll post slide decks as they come available, and so on and so on. And we'll post that link to the RFP and to the new Salesforce portal. So Rashonda, maybe you want to say something?
Quickly about, I don't know if we're going to have a weight for E grams? Maybe people are interested in this new system we're using with the portal. It's imperfect, but we're improving every day as we use it.
Oh, absolutely, and we are still working through ratings from our last cycle in our New Grants Management System, and will continue to improve using the Salesforce-based system in the coming weeks and expand for citywide implementation is the goal. I will also state that if you are interested in what previous RFPs look like, I believe they may exist on the website. And it's helpful, even though it's not for this year, it will be similar. That way, you can start to just kind of see what it looks like in advance. Yeah, I think it will be really helpful.
Yes, and I'm sharing the screen in the room and on Zoom. If you go to CDA's website, Administration Division, you can look at the 2025 funding cycle. And if you search around this page, you can find them. I believe it's in our Plans and Reports from our homepage. Yeah, you can look at documents going back to like the 2010s. So this is the 2025 cycle. You can read through it. This is a federal program that, not too many changes year to year. You can find links to last year's best practice. You can find links to last year's slide deck for that best practice. This PDF has 164 slides for you to enjoy. I've got all the free clip art that Google provides. Try and make it fun. So I think this does relate to some of the new questions here in the Q and A. Let's, Rashonda, I'll ask you, and I think these are both related. So these two questions are, will the RFP provide information on the reporting requirements for grantees? Applying is just the first step. Receiving funds is a whole process as we, CDA and grantees, become partners. And then the second question is, does CDA have videos on completing the RFP for first-time applicants?
So generally, the RFPs, our notebooks do not specify reporting requirements. And the second question is no, there is no video on completing the RFP for first-time applicants.
Rashonda, could you say that one more time?
Sure.
Yes, the RFP generally does not provide reporting requirements for grantees, and there is no video for completing the RFP for first-time applicants. Specifically, there are a lot of categories in which you can apply. Also, yeah, I'll just leave it there.
But I think we could add that some of these training videos. But I think I, we, we could add that some of these training videos that are upcoming, the trainings we'll have and the ones from last year, go through some best practices. So for what to expect if you were to be a grantee. And I think you are right there, but there are no videos for step-by-step how to fill out an application because.
Application theory.
Extremely.
Questions online? So we could go back to the room or right before eleven, whoever would like to. We're, we're here for you. There is a new question in the chat. Is there information available to see what types of projects have been funded? I think this is a good question. I am going to share my screen again. If you go to CDA's website.
So CDA, and, and while Tom is pulling it up, CDA currently funds Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we fund the St. Patrick's Center, we fund SLGC, we fund LRA, we fund city seniors. We fund your, your, your local small business for facade programs. It, it's so many organizations throughout the city. I think in the beginning in that funding chart, we had some sub recipients listed. But I think we are doing a better job of stating who all CDA funds. But yeah.
What, what I?
The, the impact report, absolutely. The impact report coming is here on our team and you can find it on the website.
List a lot of the types of programs funded by CDA. It's not necessarily CDBG funded though. With the influx of, well, with the pandemic, the city received an influx of state and local fiscal recovery act funding that was from treasury with different guidance. So CDBG funds have their own set of guidance and that is this funding source.
Yeah, so what I'm sharing on the screen here is our, our first ever impact report that covers 2020 to 2024. It's not a comprehensive list of everything, but it gives you some ideas of things, things CDA has funded in the past, especially with some of these tables for SLRF, state, local, federal recovery funds and some of our housing and construction projects. And then if you navigate over to our, our news website, which you can find a link to from our homepage, you can find some of our previous award announcements. So this is from 2020, program year 2025, published in 2024. These are all people that applied last year and are funded for this year. So I hope this creates a kind of a mental picture of folks that have been successful in their applications who are now funding partners with CDA.
And that's specifically for CDBG.
So that was a great site. Thank you, Tommy, for sharing that one.
So I know you all, but just listed the, the fund basis. It's nonprofits that collaborate anyway. So feel free to reach out to us. And if, if someone is considering applying, but they don't know, they have capacity for recording, I can tell you, I would be more than, than the one percent stated, but for our experience.
Thank you. I don't know if we were able to hear that.
That, that was a great comment. Keep repeating it.
We had a comment in, what's your name?
Bob.
Bob.
Gene Slays Boys.
Okay, we have Bob from Gene Slays Boys and Girls Club here. And Gene Slays Boys and Girls Club is a current recipient of CDBG funds. He mentioned that there are tons of sub recipients who receive the funds and that their organization in particular would be open to questions about reporting requirements and helpful and collaborating with other previously funded nonprofits if you had questions about reporting requirements. Thank you, Bob, for offering that.
We have a question in the chat. Does CDA approve funding for purchases of buildings or just construction cost of buildings? And I believe that category would be public facilities, but you're the expert.
You can apply to use CDBG funds for the purchase of buildings by way of acquisition. And also CDBG funds can be used for the construction costs of buildings. Those are both eligible activities.
Any questions in the room? We've not seen anything new via Zoom.
Okay, with that, we're going to do our second countdown. Again, we appreciate your attendance today at the 2026 Program Year CDBG Funding Priorities Public Hearing. The deadline to submit is September the fifth and the RFP will be released on August the first. Thank you here and thank you online.
Thank you, everyone, for attending and this video will be on the city's YouTube with a link from CDA's website where you can subscribe to CDA's newsletter. And as always, thank you, Trenton at STLTV for facilitating all the AV for this hybrid meeting and keeping us on track. So thank you, everyone, have a great weekend.